We're going live at 2:15. That's in three minutes. Going live in one minute. Welcome, we are now live.
Okay, Secretary Pendleton, are we ready to get started?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Good afternoon. The November 18th, 2021 meeting of the Tennessee State University Board of Trustees is now called to order. We need to make certain findings on the record regarding necessity for conducting this meeting by electronic participation without a physical quorum present due to coronavirus pandemic. In accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated Section 844-108B2, as Chair of the Board of Trustees, I offer the following facts and circumstances in support of a finding of necessity for the Board of Trustees to conduct this November 18th, 2021 meeting without the physical presence of a quorum. The Board is scheduled to take up important board matters which require timely action by the Board, including but not limited to the approval of academic program modifications in new academic programs and approval of a revised university budget. The Board will also hear important reports on the Clery Act crime data, CARES Act funding, and HBCU funding on the federal level COVID-19 related issues affecting students, and reports from the President and Board Chair. Participation by electronic means is necessitated by ongoing health and safety issues pertaining to the COVID-19 pandemic. Electronic participation for the committee meeting, excuse me, is necessary to ensure the safety of Board members, staff, and guests while the institution implements additional measures to resume its in-person operations. Accordingly, I move that the Board find that participation by forum of the Board members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Is there a second?
Second.
The question is on the motion to find that participation by forum of the Board members by electronic means of communication is necessary. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We have seven ayes.
Okay, the motion carries. We will proceed with the meeting with a quorum present. At this point in time, we need to have invocation. Is Dean Stevenson on the call? I mean Zoom, I'm sorry. Is Dean Stevenson available for the invocation? Okay, well.
It's gonna be a moment late, he mentioned.
Okay, fine. Bishop Walton, will you give us the invocation, please?
Well, thank you. Well, we're grateful and thankful for this wonderful day you've made. Thank you for the Tennessee State University faculty and staff and student body and the vision of this great institution and giving us this privilege to help steward this vision of this amazing leader, Dr. Glover. Bless our efforts to the Board, and we thank you. The days are better ahead. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Amen. As you will note in your board materials for today's board meeting, we have several items on the agenda today. Next item listed in your agenda is a roll called Declaration of a Quorum. At this time, we need to call the roll. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye, here.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Here.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pinnick.
Present.
Trustee Walker.
Here.
Trustee Thomas.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. All right. Board members, if you cannot hear or speak to the other board members, please say so now. For each board member participating electronically, please identify any individuals who are present in the location from which you are participating. The first action item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 board meeting. You have in your November 18th, 2021 board materials, the minutes for the September 16th, 2021 board meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 board meeting?
Oh, moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
To end the discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 board meeting as contained in your board materials for November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. Trustee Pinnick.
He's waiting to get back, he's waiting to get back in. Let's let him back in.
Trustee Walker. Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
Okay, the motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee Report. As the Audit Committee Chair, I will report the actions and other items from today's Audit Committee meeting. The Audit Committee met today to act on one agenda item, receive reports on two items, and to go into executive session to discuss items deemed confidential under state law. The Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board approval of the September 16th, 2021 committee Audit Committee minutes. In addition to the Audit Committee, in addition, the Audit Committee reviewed and discussed completed internal and external audit reports. They were presented by Director Davis and also reviewed outstanding audit issues. As I stated, the Audit Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Audit Committee meeting. You have in your November 18th, 2021 board material, the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Audit Committee. On behalf of the Audit Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Audit Committee meeting as contained in board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Audit Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Sure, I'm sorry. Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion is approved. This concludes the Audit Committee Report. The next item on the agenda is the Finance and Budget Committee Report. The Chair recognizes the Finance and Budget Committee Chair, Trustee Lewis, who will report the action information from today's Finance and Budget Committee meeting.
The Finance and Budget Committee met today to act on two action items and receive reports on seven items. The Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the September 16th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee many meeting minutes and the approval of the fiscal year 2022 institutional revised budget. Additionally, President Glover and our team provided reports and updates on capital planning and facilities, CARES Act funding, and finance and budget. The committee also heard reports on the land grant study committee, federal HBCU funding, enrollment, and institutional development. As I stated earlier, the Finance and Budget Committee voted to recommend to the full Board of the minutes of the September 16th Finance and Budget Committee meetings. You have in your November 18th board material, the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee. On behalf of the Finance and Budget Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of September 16th, 21, 2021 Finance and Budget Committee meeting as contained in board material for November 18th, 2021 board meetings. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie. You're on mute. Trustee McKenzie.
Second. Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. And just to let you know, Trustee Lewis, that we're transitioning into the next one. I I know it indicates that we're concluding, but the the next agenda item would be the institutional revised budget.
Catch, sir. Thank you.
Chair Cole has secured a motion. Make sure she announces the motion.
I'm sorry, yes. Okay, we have Finance Committee move to approve the, no, I'm sorry, where am I? I'm sorry. Okay. Please, I'd like to make a motion to approve the report as presented. Is there a second? Oh, did he get?
Actually, we are.
All you gotta do is know that it is approved.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm, Zoom is fading in and out. I'm sorry, what did you say?
Actually, it's just for Trustee Lewis to now move to the institutional revised budget as the next action item to be approved by the Board.
Okay, okay. So the finance and, okay, so, okay.
We didn't mean to confuse you. It's just that usually when they do the motion, you'll come back and say the motion is approved and you go to the next part. But that's okay.
Okay. So the motion is approved.
Okay.
All right. Next item then is the Finance and Budget Committee also voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the fiscal year 2020, 2022 institutional revised budget. On behalf of the Finance and Budget, I move to approve the fiscal year 2022 institutional revised budget as contained in the board materials for November 18th board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the fiscal year 22 institutional revised budget as contained in the board material for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee Report. The Chair recognized the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Chair, Trustee Martin, excuse me, to report out the action items and other items from today's academic affairs and student affairs committee meeting.
The Chair is absent and Trustee Johnson, Andre Johnson, as a vice chair, is going to report that out.
Hey, Trustee Johnson, will you please continue?
Yes, ma'am. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee met today to consider and vote on six agenda items and to receive reports on four other agenda items. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board approval of the September 16th, 2021 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meetings, approval of an academic program modification, a change to the master of occupational therapy admission standards, approval of the academic program modification, a change to the master of social work admission standards. The committee also voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of a new academic program, a PhD of agricultural science, the approval of a new academic program Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, and the approval of a new academic program Bachelor of Science in African Studies. Additionally, President Glover and and her team provided reports on the SACSCOC 10-year accreditation review, academic affairs, Clery Act crime data, and student affairs. As I stated earlier, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for November 18th, 2021 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September 16th, 2021 Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee Lewis. Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We had six ayes.
The motion is approved. I'd like to make a note that Trustee Martin was with us during all the committee meetings this morning, and which is, we often say that's where we do an awful lot of work, and we appreciate her involvement during those committee meetings. And this morning, and Trustee Johnson, we appreciate you taking on this responsibility. So you may continue, please.
Thank you, Chair Cole. The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full Board approval of an academic program modification, a change to the master of occupational therapy admission standards. Information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve an academic program modification, a change to the master of occupational therapy admission standards as contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve an academic program modification, a change to the masters of occupational therapy admission standards as contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis. Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We have six ayes.
The motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full Board the approval of an academic program modification, a change to the MS and social work admission standards. Information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve an academic program modification, a change to the MS and social work admission standards as contained in the board materials for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
End of discussion. Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve an academic program modification, a change to the MS and social work admission standards as contained in the board material for the November 18th, 2021 board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the roll.
Sure, Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker. Trustee Walker. Trustee Walker.
He might be on mute.
Yes, I got it.
Okay, we have seven ayes.
All right, uh, the Academic Affairs and Student.
Just, just a minute, uh, the, the motion is approved. Okay, now.
I'm sorry, uh, the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board approval of a new academic program, a PhD of agricultural science. Information containing, pertaining to this agenda item is contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve a new academic program, a PhD of agricultural science as contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like just to point out that, uh, the process has two approvals by this board. One is approval to explore. Uh, and the second one, and which we were doing under this one, is the recommendation to TAC to implement.
Thank you. Uh, okay, um, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program, a PhD of agricultural sciences contained in the board materials for the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the role.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Uh.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, a BS in elementary education. Information pertaining to this agenda item is contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve a new academic program, a BS in elementary education as contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve a new academic program of BS in elementary education is contained in the board materials for the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the role.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Uh.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion, uh, the motion is approved.
The Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee also voted to recommend to the full board the approval of a new academic program, a BS in Africana Studies. Information pertaining to this agenda is contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting. On behalf of the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee, I move to approve a new academic program, a BS in Africana Studies as contained in the board materials for the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? The question is on the motion to approve a new academic program of BS in Africana Studies as contained in the board materials for the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the role.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Uh.
Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Motion is approved.
Chair Cole, this concludes the Academic Affairs and Student Affairs Committee report. We are all very excited about these new programs that Tennessee State University will be offering. Thank you.
And thank you, trustee Johnson, uh, for presenting that report. The next item on the agenda is executive committee report. As the chair of the board of the chair of executive committee, I will report the action and information items from today's executive committee meeting. The executive committee met today to discuss and vote on specified committee agenda items. The committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the September sixteen, twenty twenty one executive committee meeting minutes. The executive committee also heard reports on the president's annual performance review process and a report for, from secretary, um, Pendleton. As I stated, the executive committee voted to recommend to the full board the approval of the minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty one executive committee meeting contained in the board materials for the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. On behalf of the executive committee, I move to approve the minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty one executive committee meeting as contained in the board materials for, uh, the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, the question is on the motion to approve the minutes of the September sixteen, twenty twenty one executive committee meeting as contained in the board materials for the November eighteen, twenty twenty one board meeting. Secretary Pendleton, please call the role.
Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson.
Uh.
Trustee William Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
We have seven ayes. I also wanted to note, Chair Cole, of trustee Pinnick's, um, vote on the audit committee minutes, register that, uh, his, uh, vote in favor of that too, to the extent that was missed.
Thank you. The motion is approved. This concludes the executive committee report. The next item on agenda is a report on the Clari Act crime statistics. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to call our chief Robinson, who's going to make that presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Glover. Uh, and again, good afternoon. I just want to speak quickly about the Clari Act. As we all know, what it is, a federal mandate that, uh, requests that we have to report certain instances and crimes that occur on campus. And when those things co- occur, we have to make our TSU community aware of what has transpired so they can take safety measures, uh, to make themselves or keep themselves safe. Uh, and with the Clari Act, with those statistics, Tennessee State University had a decline of almost fifty-three percent in, uh, those Clari crimes that were reported to the university. Uh, and that's from thi- this last year. That's on the heels of another positive year in twenty nineteen, where we're ranked in the top eight percent of safest colleges, uh, in the United States. I think those things need to be, uh, stated and, and applauded. I always say, when we here on campus feel safe, it resonates throughout. And, uh, I just continually appreciate the, uh, support we get that we do all we can to provide the safe environment on campus. And, uh, just want to let us know that these statistics continue to decline and we'll do all, all we can with the system above us to, to keep this positive thing going on for our community and our university. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Chief Robinson and President Glover. We appreciate the presentation and, um, commend you on the work that's been done. Um, the next item on agenda is reported of the federal HBCU funding. The chair recognizes President Glover, who will provide information regarding this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I do the president's report that's going to follow this, I want to update you on the federal HBCU funding. We had a robust, detailed discussion in committee meeting, so I will just cover a few points regarding my role in HBCU legislation. Immediately after the election, uh, last fall, several HBCU presidents were asked by VP Kamala Harris to provide input here into the higher education agenda. I personally spoke with Vice President Harris and spent, uh, some quality time with the Biden team and spoke with, spent time with Congress, about caucus, other legislators, uh, even legislators from Tennessee, provide input into the legislation for ma- primaries that pertains to higher education HBCUs. I participated in several meetings, whether by Zoom or in person. This was in my capacity as president of TSU and as a member of Divine Nine, as international president of Alpha Kappa Alpha. President Biden had met with Divine Nine presidents a few times during the campaign to answer questions and seek input. He committed to regular meetings with Divine Nine HBCU presidents, who his administration calls as regularly. Now, the bill. Initially, the Build Back Better Act had a high price tag of six trillion, included an enormous wish list. It currently stands at one point seven five trillion. But as it relates to HBCUs, the bill initially had a, a tax of six trillion overall. A lot was in the HBCU. Then negotiation and the cuts started. I think it's important for the board to know the access that I was given during this important time. In addition to the role I play as HBC, HBCU president, the role I played as president of Alpha Kappa Alpha brought, brought additional access. I met with several members of the Congress about caucus, I visited Washington on a few occasions, had several Zoom meetings, provided input, helped with the legislation. We just continued to push for increased HBCU funding, but we knew that TSU would benefit if we got more HBCU funding. So we asked for another one billion dollars for HBCUs. Because of the diligent work and advocacy, I was asked by Congresswoman Fred Buecher-Wilson of Florida to testify to the House Education Committee on the funding needs of HBCUs. So I testified. I believe it was October sixth. On that same day, I had to leave that testimony a few minutes earlier to meet with Vice President Kamala Harris. They had scheduled that meeting with Divine Nine on the same date because that's how our schedule worked out. In fact, the White House had made arrangements for me to testify by Zoom in front of the White House down the hall from where we met with Vice President. So the third important thing that happened that day was that President Biden appointed me as vice chair of his president's advisory board of HBCUs. And I'm very honored to serve in that capacity. The advisory board is excited because of the benefits to TSU. For example, they've spoken to me personally about assisting HBCUs who now hold the research two status, R two, to become R one, which is the highest in the country. There are eleven HBCUs in this category. TSU is one of those R two institutions seeking to become R one. They've agreed to make funds available to assist these HBCUs and coupled with state funding to become research magnets and move to R one. This is monumental for HBCUs, and for TSU in particular. We're developing an intentional plan to make this happen. So here's where we are with legislation as it pertains to HBCUs. After much advocacy, negotiation, calls, letters to Congress, emails, et cetera. Minority serving institutions will get ten billion dollars for their institutions. About four billion of this will go toward recent research and development, infrastructure for, for minority serving institutions. That's even more than the two billion that was proposed in the, the original bill. Uh, minority serving institutions will also receive six billion dollars to award need-based financial aid to low-income students. And that's where most of our population is. This is where we are now with the federal legislation, HBCU legislation. And I want you to know my efforts that were involved in this process. So thank you again, Madam Chair, for allowing me this opportunity to provide this HBCU funding update. Thank you very much.
Okay, Dr. Glover, first I want to commend you on, um, the efforts that you have put forth. And I think that is just awesome. Um, I want to say that your efforts in supporting HBCUs across country is known nationally. Uh, if there was ever any question about the two positions that you have held as president of TSU and spring bachelors of the Alpha Kappa Alpha sorority, I think that we can see now the payoff from it in terms of the context. And the contacts that you reported to us, that you made in Washington are absolutely tremendous. And to be appointed to, uh, that committee, and as I was often told, that if you're not at the table, you're on the table. So we do sincerely appreciate those efforts and want to, and hope that everyone will, uh, recognizes the significance of that. Uh, I can't state it as eloquently as Bishop Walker did in committee meeting, but I hope I did get the basic points across. Uh, one other comment I want to make is that all the individuals you see here from the board and the committees, they have been together all morning. The majority, the work is done on the committee level. There is robust discussion, uh, um, meetings run over. We still stay in there to get what needs to be done. When we come to the board meeting, we're reporting the results. So I just always like to remind everyone of the effort that is put into getting to this point. And I thank, uh, Dr. Glover and staff for all the work that they do and having that information ready for us so that when we get to this point, we are presenting, uh, summaries. But again, Dr. Glover, thank you for that Washington connection. We do appreciate that. And the benefit that it's going to have for Tennessee State University because we won't be hearing what we think was done. We will be hearing what we know was done. At this point in time, then, the next item on the agenda is the president's report. The chair recognizes President Glover again, who will present a report on this agenda item.
Uh, thank you. So the agenda, we're going to just cover the COVID nineteen update, uh, some of the operating, how we operate it, go through the art updates, the sexioc update, recruitment enrollment, the CARES Act, and then we're about to go out and the land grant funds over to TSU. So first, the COVID nineteen pandemic, how they're operating. University operated with an in-person classroom this fall, and we planned the same in the spring. Uh, we had in-person, online, and hybrid. A class has started on August sixteenth, we're ending on tomorrow because commencement is being held Saturday. Um, we had it scheduled earlier for as, as a virtual commencement for next Saturday as we had last year. But when the students came to me and asked about having in-person, because we have a lot of other things in person, homecoming and football game, other things, we, we saw the merit of what they were saying. So we moved it to, um, to November and to have it in, in person. Uh, I'm stressing, we have a lot of telec- telecounseling services available twenty-four seven. So with telehealth services also offered, and we had aggressive testing and performance tools. That's how we operated mainly during the fall. We kept our health and safety protocols and enhanced them some. We kept the face coverings with, required the mask to be worn at all times. On campus, when in the public place, we particularly stretched it inside, uh, indoors. We had social distance. We kept, we implemented that at all times. We had social distance placas placed throughout the campus. We did temperature checks when it came to campus. Uh, hand sanitizer stations, we kept open. With the Plexiglas, the Plexidex, Plexiglas desk shields are still in various offices. And we stress vaccinations. Now, with speaking of vaccinations, they were strongly encouraged for all employees and all students. We did not have a vaccination mandate, but we just stressed it and just strongly encouraged it. So but facilitate the vaccination process, we set up vaccination stations onsite and offered on-campus vaccinations each day for the first eight weeks of the school session. And they're still being arranged now for students and employees, uh, but not, it's not set up each day like it was the first eight weeks. You know, often during the homecoming events. And so over sixty percent of our, of students that are on campus have been vaccinated. Then we had some incentives to get students vaccinated. I would think, I had, we had a hundred dollar gift card to each student who could show proof of them being fully vaccinated. And then those who lived on campus that could show proof of being fully vaccinated got an additional fifty dollars. So that helped us have such a high rate of vaccinated students. Therefore, employees, we had the same type of incentive, a hundred dollar gift card. So eighty percent of our employees have been vaccinated, which is a very good number for us. We think we've reached that critical mass now. So the COVID nineteen cases, I think we heard that this morning, just, you know, just a, a note about it. We have less, we've had less than a hundred students in, in total for the entire semester that, that tested positive. We went about six weeks with no case at all, uh, because we have a very effective IQ zone for the students. Um, and we just had a successful homecoming and the, just the, the high ca- didn't have a spike in cases at homecoming. I think we had five or six cases uh, after homecoming. So we did very well when it came to COVID cases this fall. And we're just worried about the student experiences, uh, student activities. Students have enjoyed. It's a wholesome experience as far, we're very pleased with them being self-participatory and all the events that's coming up, that's come up. Uh, the students talked about the Irish booth, has introduced this. This is a photo booth for our students. We're the only HBCU that in the country, this booth is using for, uh, their online work for what they want to do, LinkedIn, they want to do their, I mean, whatever use they may have with a, with this professional photo booth is, is very, very, uh, good. The type of pantry, we mentioned that, I just provide support for some of the food and security for our students on campus. We partnered with Kroger's and Second Harvest on this and some others. Then we introduced a student court this fall. Now to the art update. We've corrected our deficiencies, noting the audit, while the financial deficiencies, we see some others that we're working on. But the deficiencies, but we corrected, I'm going to say most of, substantially all of them. We updated our financial processes and implemented some training for the university and the TSU foundation. Uh, the audit was completed for June third of twenty twenty, June third, twenty nineteen. The audit was completed for June third of twenty twenty, June third, twenty nineteen, and they have, we have received, unmodified was a clean opinion, just because unqualified, and unmodified clean opinion for the audit for both twenty, twenty and twenty nineteen. Moving on to SACC OC update, it's been reported, you know, last March, we met, and virtually, we were complying with seventy-two of the seventy-four standards, thirteen point two, thirteen point four were the ones, we cannot be considered compliant because we have not completed audit. I just mentioned that we have completed audit, turned it in, that the audit addressed thirteen point two, standard thirteen point four, those two standards. The board meets December and they'll announce the final results. It has been submitted to SACC OC already. Moving on to recruitment and enrollment. This is just a natural enrollment data. I went back just the last four years, twenty eighteen with seven seven eighty was our student number. We went up to eight, eight thousand, we had that grant from Apple, we had a big spike in the students taking the Apple course. Then COVID went down to seven six fifteen, and this fall, we had a concerted effort to get to our students, get them back in school, we paid their balances, we met with students, we were very intentioned in our efforts to bring our students back. And so we back up now to eight oh seven seven, we have a goal for next year of hiring there. I mentioned, it was up mainly a lot because we paid off some prior student balances for returning students. We know the number one reason students don't return to school is because they don't have the funds. We've done more than one survey on this, and that seems to be the overriding reason. We may have some, some, you know, one or two or three percent, but ninety percent of our students say they don't return for lack of money. So the CARES Act funding and the other federal stimulus funds were used for this initiative to help pay off student balances and get students back in school. And we have new facilities on campus, the new health science building, we had a ribbon cutting on June seventeenth, and it was, it's just an amazing building, it's just unbelievable. Students are really enjoying it. We have several initiatives being held over there, it's just, it's just, it's beautiful. And then the, the two new residence halls will open up next fall, they are substantially complete now. We have to do, do a lot more with the furniture, it's, it's not quite ready yet, but that's the picture of the new residence halls, there are two combined into, with the one lobby. We're really pleased about that. Okay, I won't go through the CARES Act funding anymore, I think you've been CARES Act funded out, let's go to the next one. We've been good stewards of our CARES Act funding. So grants and research. You can see, we started, I just went back a few years, we've been to fifty millions for a long time, we dropped down to forties. But then last year, at the year end, June third, twenty-one, we hit our highest ever of seventeen million, seven hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. That was just phenomenal. We, we applaud Dr. Francis Williams and her team and all the faculty for writing so many grants and doing such, such quality research. And therefore, this year alone, to date, we've got fifty-four million, ninety-five, I mean, we've got as much in the half year as we've done in four years in the past. So we have really beautified our research. We're trying to do, get our intentional plan together to go from R two to R one, and involves a lot of research, specific research, and our PhDs involves a lot. But we're looking at the research level, we're really doing well with the research. It's about expenditures, not so much the research itself, it's about research expenditures in certain areas, expenditures is what they really count, with, toward the, the R two to R one. We're ways away, but we, we have a plan that will get us there. So that's where we are with grants and research, we're pleased where we are. Last one is the land grant funds, as I was at TSU, I went over it earlier today, but the, the former committee, the purpose was to study the equities of the prior year sterling state funding for the two land-grant institutions in Tennessee, specifically about Tennessee State, and the effect it had on it. And the committee charged TSU, THEC, and the Commission of Finance to identify the needs of TSU that related to this funding arrears. We did that, submitted a report on September first. Their report has been circulated and being discussed now, we're preparing now for the twenty twenty-two legislative session. We know the amount of arrears is five hundred forty-four million. So we're meeting with Representative Glover, who's been a true champion through all of this, and the, and all the other legislators who have worked with us, we commend them, and we're working together, and we're working with you a little bit more, just to make sure we got your input, so we can get the, the right presentation for this next legislative session. So again, the amount, oh, the amount of arrears is five hundred forty-four million. So, Madam Chair, that is the report from the president, and I thank you very much for this opportunity. We're proud to serve.
Thank you so much, Dr. Glover, at this point in time. It is the chair's report, which I'll be very brief, but I do want to recognize Ms. Allison Letcher, and appreciate you for being here with us today. Thank you so much for staying. Okay, just very quickly, Dr. Williams, I want to just base our report, just so I want to congratulate you on that research efforts that is fantastic, and looking forward to being in R one category. Also, trustee Johnson, thank you for joining the board. It is, you've already been a great contributor, as we've been in our committee meetings today, and I look forward to continuing to work with you and to serve on behalf of Tennessee State University. Is there any additional business? If there's no additional business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I move. Is a second, I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay. I move the, the secretary of, please call the roll.
Okay, Chair Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Andre Johnson. Trustee Bill Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Lewis.
Aye.
Trustee McKenzie.
Aye.
Trustee Pinnick.
Aye.
Trustee Walker.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thanks to everyone for committing for a very long day. The motion is approved, and we are adjourned. Thank you.